You will each have one minute to answer, starting with Pamela Carter. How do we balance future growth with limited water resources?
Well, I'm glad you asked the question because I know Scottsdale has the best conservation system already in place. They've spent millions of dollars on conservation already. In fact, we are the award-winning city for water. I know this is a big concern for a lot of the citizens that I've spoken with on the campaign trail. And I want to make sure that we maintain and keep our aquifers full. And I know that there's a lot of concern about water, but we're only in the tier-one aspect right now of our water shortage. And so I'm confident that Scottsdale is taking care of this, and I want to manage those resources the best I can for the voters. Thank you so much, and it is an honor to be here. And by the way, I am a lifelong native of Arizona and lived in Scottsdale and went to school here, so thank you.
Thank you. Are you going to repeat the question?
How do we balance future growth with limited water resources?
Appreciate that. Well, it's a very good question. And when I was on Planning Commission, this was something that really concerned me. The specter of adding 50,000 apartments to Scottsdale seemed to me something that would not be good for Scottsdale's long-term. When you think about Scottsdale, its character is very important, and we need to protect its character because that's what is your quality of life, and that is what brings tourists here. That's what helps our economy grow. So we have to balance those things. I'm not on board with those who say we want to build that many because I don't think that's sustainable from a water standpoint. And something else I'd like to see is that when projects come before the city council, that they produce a water matrix that shows the incremental use of water for those particular projects. Thank you. That way, we can get more transparency about what exactly the water consumption for each project will be. Thank you.
So, water is the life of Arizona and for Scottsdale. But let's start with some facts first. Scottsdale is in a better position than many -- Scottsdale is in a better position than many of our neighboring communities through the aggressive recycling reclamation and replenishment of our water tables. We're doing an excellent job. The other most important data point is that residential water use is less than one-quarter of the valley's water use. In fact, 75% is from agriculture and energy generation. Scottsdale uses less water, and the valley uses less water today than it did 50 years ago, even though our population has gone up exponentially. And that is because of smarter water management as well as a transition away from agriculture. There are many things that the city can continue to do and should do, and I support that sustainability as part of my platform. But something that we should not do is stop all growth and development and tell the world that we're closed for business. There are smart things we can do, and yes, water is important.
Well, the water level in the lakes are dropping. Las Vegas now has to build another outlet so that they can continue to pump water from the lakes for their use. The development that we continue to approve in Scottsdale is increasing the need for water in Scottsdale and throughout the state. It's not just our city, it's throughout the entire state. The Water Department is probably the best one in the entire state, but he cannot create water out of thin air. Currently, our water supply is sufficient, but we are under a tier-one conservation program. We are going to have to ration water, and that is going to continue as the need and demand for our water continues to increase. I believe in the long-term answer is to create the ability to transport water across the United States. However, nearer term, we need to stop automatically approving water-guzzling overdevelopment. Thank you.
Thank you. There's nothing more important in the desert than water, and I have spent a considerable portion of my career working with water agencies such as CAWCD. So I have a pretty good handle on the water situation. And it is correct that we use less water today than we have back in the 1960s and '70s. And that's because of technology, and that's because of positive developments in terms of sustainability and the efforts of the city to cut back and be a good steward of our own water resources. What I'm not hearing from a lot of folks so far has been the fact that the water issue is not a Scottsdale issue per se, it's a regional issue. If we don't have, you know, the developments in Scottsdale and they just go to Phoenix, we draw water from the same place. So we have to make sure that we do a better job working with our regional partners, with the county, with the other municipalities, with CAP and with SRP, to make sure that we have sustainable technology to keep water supply where it needs to be, which is in a good place right now, but we could do more.
Well, thank you. So on the development issue, one of the first initiatives I started, which is coming forward to the city council, is to raise the green building standards for new construction so that these new projects not only use less energy but also use less water. And council will be voting on that soon, so I'm excited about that. It is important to know that this is a regional problem, and that 70% of Scottsdale water use is outdoor water use. And so that's really the focus of what we need to conserve. And that brings up the point of where is our future water coming from? The two biggest new reservoirs are conservation and recycling, and Scottsdale has invested in both for decades. Scottsdale today treats 20 million gallons a day of water to a quality that exceeds bottled water. So to put it bluntly, that's when you -- that's our sewage. But we need to expand that technology, we need to make sure that other cities in the valley are doing the same, because it is not possible for Scottsdale to succeed and other cities not to succeed. We must work together and succeed together. Thank you.
So you've already heard everybody talk about what a great city management -- great water management the city has, and that's true. We lead in recycling, in conservation, and so forth. And I also agree that it's regional, not just city. So if we stop growing or if we slow down our growth, it's just going to go somewhere else, and they're going to use the same water that we're going to -- we should be using. So we have to find a way that we can still grow and use the water, and the best way to do that is to put in place things that will tell the developers that they should add some things that will create a technology so that we -- for water conservation and such. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now start the second round of questions with Barry Graham, and you all have one minute to answer. What should the height -- building height and density look like in Old Town?
Paul, thank you for the question. The building height and density in Old Town, well, I can definitely tell you what it shouldn't be. I don't think we need to be going eight, 12, 15 stories. I don't think that's the direction that we should be going. You know, Old Town -- and let me ask you, did you see Old Town or the full downtown?
Old Town.
Okay. Well, the Old Town is just kind of a sliver of an area, and that should be -- that should really be protected as it is. I mean, that's a tourist draw, and that should be generally remain as it is. For the full downtown and the downtown character area plan, I do support the efforts to look at that and maybe see ways that we can bring some of that down, because there's places that, you know, they want to add, you know, you're looking at 10, 12 stories in downtown throughout, and you've just got to think about what that does to traffic. You've got to think about what that does to the incremental use in water and public safety and all that, so thank you.
Feel free to expand that to downtown.
And I thank Barry for that clarifying question, because the Old Town Character Area Plan doesn't differentiate between the historic part of Old Town and the rest of the downtown area. And I think that is an important distinction. And I do not believe we should be building high-density, high-rises in the old historic part of downtown. But I do believe there are other areas within that Old Town Character Area Plan that can support larger buildings. Now, there's a lot of misinformation out there, and you're going to get sick of me talking about facts, but when they talk about 150 feet, there are very few places that 150 feet could even be considered, let alone approved. But I am concerned with overdevelopment and density, especially in the historic part, and we have to make sure we protect our neighborhoods and not create problems where we don't need them.
Building heights and density in Old Town and in historic downtown should be limited. We have a historic downtown in our downtown that many, many, many tourists come here to see. They don't need to see what they can see in every other city in the country. They want to see what made us, Scottsdale, historic, special, and unique. They want to see the Old Town, the Western Town, and that we need to keep. We do not need to heighten it or make it more dense or put up high-rise 150-story buildings that will destroy what they come to see. Old Town and downtown are very, very similar in that, and I think that we need to be very careful on what we build there. We have a plan which allows for certain heights and densities throughout our downtown and Old Town, and we need to be careful we don't expand on that. Thank you.
So this is a very important issue. First of all, tourism is the lifeblood of our economy in Scottsdale. We need to do everything we can to protect tourism. That means, in particular with this question, to make sure that we are affording adequate protection to the historic Old Town area. I fully support designating that as a protected area. Now, as for the rest of downtown Scottsdale, there are areas where it's more appropriate to have a little bit more heightened density. You know, people come here to visit Scottsdale not just for the Western charm, they come here for a multitude of reasons. So we need to make that point very clear, that we need to make sure that we are keeping Scottsdale relevant for tourism, because tourism provides dollars that provide services to all of us and amenities that we and our families love. That's the winning formula for Scottsdale, and that's how every decision that I make on council will be evaluated. What can we do to improve the economy in Scottsdale? Thank you.
Thank you. So historic Old Town is protected, so it's off the table. So for the rest of Old Town, my position's pretty clear based on my negotiated projects downtown. What we need downtown, we do need to expand residences, and we have done that, but what we need is development that adds value to downtown and invests in downtown. So the projects that I've negotiated are mid-rises, not high-rises. They're replacing vacant, blighted buildings with boutique hotels and high-end residential units. We've enabled the smaller developers to build on top of their shops. That brings more vibrancy downtown without mega projects. And with the added height, when people do get to go up to that 70 feet, they have to provide open space. So the projects I've approved have open space, they have those greener building standards, so less water, less urban heat, bigger trees, more trees, and public throughways. And we know from our tourists and residents that that's what people want, to be able to get around downtown via pedestrian pathways. Thank you.
I think we're all in agreement that the Old Town area should be left alone, leave it as its tourist attraction that it is. But I also believe that there are other areas of downtown that could be built upon, as in some of the old hotels that are no longer in use, using that as a way to not go high, maybe two stories, possibly three, depending on how it looks. But also, as others have said, setbacks, ways that the public benefits from these so that it feels as though it's ours and it's not just the developer's project. So I believe that we should leave the Old Town character alone, but let's look at ways that we can still develop in Old Town so that we can attract tourists and we can attract residents to come to Old Town. Thank you.
Being a native of Arizona, I love this state. I'm a desert girl, and I was born and raised in the desert. My dad is -- has been here forever, as well as my mother. My -- I was raised in Scottsdale and went to school here, and I love Scottsdale. I want to preserve, protect, and promote Scottsdale as the premier tourist destination in the nation. I want us to maintain our tourist attraction of Old Town. I think it is preserved. I did not know that. Thank you for that, Solange. I want it to be protected as a historic district, and I don't want that changed. I think we can develop sensibly in downtown, but I want to preserve and protect from the high-rise, high-density overdevelopment in Scottsdale. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go a little bit out of turn for the lightning round, and then we'll go back to our regular scheduled program with Daniel. We're going to start with Solange, and this is a simple yes-or-no question for everybody. Do you favor council districts?
I do not. No.
No. Pamela?
Absolutely no.
I absolutely don't favor council voting on it. It's a voter issue. They should prove it.
No.
No.
No, I do not favor council districts, but it should be left to the voters.
Nice job on the lightning round, guys. And I got to tell you, if you can't see Teresa Cleveland or Timer up here, she's relentlessly efficient with a hand just a fraction away from that go bell at any time. Loving that, loving that. Okay, next roundup, Daniel, we're going to start with you, please. What is the city doing or not doing to help maintain the culture, the character of the Old Town area?
Well, several of my fellow candidates have already commented, we are protecting the Old Town. We have building specifications, and all building that I would ever vote on has to meet the exacting standards of quality that are in our zoning and development rules. And they have to go through that process, and we need to make sure that there's a benefit back for the city for anything that we're doing. And we have a planning commission, we have a Development Review Board, and it is their job to make sure that anything that we're adding to the city maintains the character. Separate from development, we have to make sure that we continue to do the arts and cultural aspects that promote the history of Scottsdale, the Old West, and other arts that are important to the residents and visitors. And we have to make sure that we continue to be attractive, not only to our residents but to the tourists, because as several people have said, they are our lifeblood for our revenue.
Could you repeat that, please?
Absolutely. What is the city doing or not doing to help maintain the character, the culture of the Old Town area?
Well, we're not doing very much. I think that we need to focus more on this issue. The Old Town area, the downtown area, is an attraction for the tourists. This is where they want to be. This is where they want to go. This is what they want to see. Whether it's the Old West and Fifth Avenue, or if it's the shops and the fancy things that they can buy on Main Street as they go down, they want to be able to see and to get to the areas that they want to visit. This is what a lot of the tourists come for when they come here to the Old Town and downtown. And if we don't offer the transportation and the roads and the parking that they want when they come down to visit, they're not going to come. So we need to make it as easy as possible for our tourists to get there and to see what they want to see. Goal one.
As we've already discussed, we have set aside and protected, so to speak, the historic core. But what I want to focus on and what I would like to see more of are efforts to really energize the business community downtown. And by energize, I mean, let's try to do more to bring more people down there. We need more parking, we need to address some basic issues of streetscaping and things of that nature. I would love to see more trees and shade downtown to make it a little more pedestrian-friendly for shoppers that just want to stroll up and down our beautiful streets and go on our shops. I think what the city needs to do is to really help set the table and to really help drive traffic into the Old Town area so our shopkeepers have more customers, so we have more vibrancy downtown. That is what I want to focus on in terms of making it pedestrian-friendly and tourist-friendly. Thank you.
So what we've done is we've capitalized on what we're great at and what is our value, and that's open space and path systems. So downtown, we're -- I've initiated and we're moving forward with the Emerald Necklace Path System to connect every part of downtown with the other quadrants. And we've added a tree canopy plan as well. But we've also taken the best of the new. We require the highest-quality standards for our new development, but we ask that that development match the character, match or exceed the character of what we already have. And so we're getting beautiful new buildings that are energy-efficient and conserve water, but yet they look like the mid-century modern buildings that they are next to. On top of that, we've convinced developers to set aside buildings as historic museums. And I'll add one more thing before I get binged, is that we've expanded the number of events that we have, arts events, from the stadium to the waterfront. We're doing many more events for our residents and our visitors. Thank you. Timer.
We all agree that the -- and everybody has said it so far, that the character of downtown, Old Town, must remain the biggest, the big tourist attraction that it is. I also agree that we should keep the character and anything that gets developed in that way to blend with the character of the westmost western town. Let's make it look as though, even though it's brand-new, as though it's been here for a long time so that we can keep that character going. Also, yes, let's increase the pedestrian value of the downtown area, places to walk, trees so that people can stay out of the heat, and ways to get around so that it brings that vibrant energy to downtown that we are known for and that we expect and that we really enjoy even as citizens, to be able to walk around and enjoy the downtown area. Thank you.
I'm not in favor of spending gratuitously our taxpayer dollars doing sidewalks and some new development there. I do think we need to maintain the flow of the architecture in the city. I am a little concerned about the entertainment industry. I have talked to many citizens who are concerned about the party element in the Old Town area, the bars, there are drugs coming over, the cartels are bringing over fentanyl. They are in that district, and I think we need to create a way for our police force to have more enforcement of our laws. And I do, I am in favor of supporting our police all the way as well as creating the beautiful character of downtown. I want to continue to preserve that. If we're going to develop, let us do it smarter.
Thank you. Good question. There's so much to say about downtown. I wish I had more time. We have a great downtown, one-of-a-kind, and why are we trying to take it in a direction that wants to duplicate every other downtown? We need to preserve our downtown, and we need to protect it. We need to make sure it's not too dense. We need to make sure that there's parking. We're attacking our parking, we need to protect our parking downtown so people can drive down there and shop. We need to make sure our downtown is safe. Nobody talks about it, but homeless, homelessness is on the rise. We need to make sure our downtown is safe so when people go down there and they walk around, tourists feel safe and they want to come back. The homeless issue needs to be dealt with gently. I don't believe, I think as we get higher and denser, there's going to be a push for mass transit and some sort of fixed rail system, and I don't believe that's good for our downtown. I think it would kill business, and I think it would maybe even do worse. So there's so much about to say about our downtown, and we're trying to duplicate so many other downtowns, but let's protect what we have. Thank you.
So you will each have one minute to answer, starting with Councilwoman Kathy Littlefield. With the increase in crime in entertainment districts across the nation, in Phoenix and here in Scottsdale, is Scottsdale doing enough, and what do you propose?
The crime in downtown Scottsdale, in the Bar District primarily, which is where it is, is increasing. I don't believe we are doing enough to control it. We are allowing the people to come in with very little control. They come in with guns, they shoot people. We've had murders down there. And our police are doing their best, but we need to give them the control and the ability to watch the area. In other words, we need to have the police be able to do their jobs, and we're not doing that. And I'm not saying they should go in with guns blazing, that's ridiculous, but they need to have the ability to arrest, the ability to be there, and the ability to stop something before it actually happens. And that's something that they don't have. Thank you.
So I believe that the police do have the ability to go in and arrest folks. I think what we need are more police, because right now, after talking with a lot of Scottsdale officers and looking at the situation, we have a recruitment problem with both police and fire. Unfortunately, in today's economy, with the way the job market is, it's tough to attract candidates, good candidates, to become officers. Who would want that job in today's society, right? And so as the leaders in Scottsdale, we need to make sure that we're positioning our police force to be one of the best forces in the valley. They do a tremendous job, but we need more officers. We need to do more to recruit and retain the officers that we have. As it pertains to the Bar District in Scottsdale, what we need to have there, I believe, is we need to have more things such as lighting and some of the back alleyways. We need to make things safer for our residents. Thank you.
So a policeman cannot stop every crime from happening, but our police do investigate, capture, and arrest, and prosecute those who commit crimes. When we had a one-day event in Scottsdale at our mall, our police and our investigators continued to arrest over 100 people for over a year. In fact, there might still be arrests happening. So you can run, but you cannot hide. In the Bar District, we are increasing lights, we're changing a police ordinance to put more of the burden of protecting the area on the bar owners and less on the taxpayers. And there's another type of crime happening in Scottsdale. We're seeing more assaults on our police officers. It could be something simple like pushing a police officer. So we have asked, our city council majority has asked that our prosecutor prosecute every one of those. And finally, I will say that we have a speeding problem, too. That is a deadly problem in Scottsdale, and we're issuing a record number of tickets. We need people to slow down. Thank you.
First, I think our public safety does a great job of keeping us safe as a whole. As it comes to the bars, the entertainment district, yes, I have noticed that the crime keeps increasing. I would propose a dedicated unit to that area so that we know that there's somebody there at all times so that they are able to jump on a call immediately. I also believe that we should, as Solange said, make the owners, the bar owners, responsible for some of that safety there, so that everybody has skin in the game so that it is a safer place to be. It is an attraction, and it's okay, it's great that it's an attraction because that's one of the things that we're known for, so let's make it as safe as possible. And I think dedicating a unit to that area would be one way to help alleviate the problem.
Oh, I thought I answered. What was the question again? I'm sorry. Can you repeat?
Sure. With the increase in crime in entertainment districts across the nation, in Phoenix and here in Scottsdale, is Scottsdale -- here in Scottsdale, is Scottsdale doing enough and what do you propose?
Well, I think that everyone has answered pretty well, and I think I mentioned that in the last comment I made about the entertainment industry. And I am concerned about panhandling drugs, and I do talk to several of our citizens and our residents, and they are very concerned about the party element, the party houses. They're concerned about that area. I think our police should be the best-paid police in our state, and I think we need to do more to support them and to make sure that we have everything that we need for them to do their job. And I am concerned about the party element. I've had many people that have actually seen crimes and have not felt safe going into the entertainment district. So I am in support of supporting our police. Thank you.
Very good question. It's a very concerning topic, because crime has ticked up little by little. Everybody's seen that, and some of these solutions are very good. We obviously need to attract and retain very good police officers to make sure that they can have the tools they can do to perform their jobs and enforce the laws and keep us safe. Something else we need to consider is the fact that we are kind of heading down a road that, if you look around the country and you see other denser cities with higher crime rates, we're kind of going down the same road to get to the point where they are. And there's just, you know, some of the things that our city, that our city council and the city is doing is taking us that direction. You know, you're not gonna, if you're, these are the good old days for the crime, if once, you know, you bring in mass transit or something of that sort. And we are going down the road that is making us look more and more like some of these other cities that we don't want to emulate, so we've got to be very careful. Thank you.
Our police and public safety officials do a wonderful job of keeping us safe. Is crime increasing? Yes, it is. And some of my fellow candidates have pointed out why that's happening. Part of it is the attrition of the workforce, of our police force. We have more vacancies of our 400-person police force than we've ever had before, and we've got the lowest recruiting rates than we have ever had before. Our people applying is one-sixth to one-tenth of what it was 10 years ago. So we have to make sure that our pay and benefits are appropriate to continue to attract and retain the finest people. Now, specific areas are more likely to have crime, but I don't think it's unique to the entertainment district. Personal and property crime is increasing throughout, and so we do need to increase our police presence. But the first step in increasing our police presence is making sure that we are staffed appropriately. We have to give our police force respect, we have to train them, we have to give them the tools, and we have to make sure that they're supported by the council and the people of this city.
So now we have a lightning round question, and this is a short-answer question. What is your favorite Scottsdale restaurant? It's very important.
Living, or present or past?
It just says, what is your favorite Scottsdale restaurant? Raul, we're studying with you.
Oh, are you? Okay. Wow, if you look in the past, I'm going to say Don and Charlie's. If you look now, probably Tommy V's, right there on Brown and Indian School.
I guess I could go next. I'm kind of a morning person, Inner Circle Cafe, anyone? I love their coffee, and it's Scottsdale-owned.
I love lots of things down on the waterfront, but Olive and Ivy, Olive and Ivy is a special place. I love going there in the morning and just having a cup of coffee before heading into work and just relaxing and watching people go by the canal.
I guess I'd have to say Pita Jungle. We go there a lot for dinner and we enjoy the food, and it's pretty tasty.
Hash Kitchen for breakfast, AZ88 for cocktails, and Blanco for Mexican.
Anyone been to Handle Bar J's? I also, you better go there now while you can. Uncle Sal's, Thomas and Hayden will be going away. It's being replaced by hundreds of apartments, and I voted against that on Planning Commission, but they replaced that with 100 apartments, Green Bell 88. So go to Uncle Sal's before it shuts down.
Definitely the Red Sauce at Aho Al's. It is a family-owned restaurant. I'm half Latina, and I love my red enchilada sauce. So enchilada, chicken enchiladas, you got to get the chicken enchiladas at Aho Al's. They're the best, just like my grandmother's.
Okay, we're back to serious questions. We're going to start with Tim, and you each have one minute to answer. What is your solution to Scottsdale's homelessness problem?
Sure, that's a great question, very timely. We have, as you all know, an increase in homelessness in Scottsdale. It's a terrible problem, and it needs a compassionate solution, but it needs a realistic solution and one that doesn't actually make the problem worse. There have been some talk recently of taking a hotel in Scottsdale and converting it into a homeless shelter, a regional homeless shelter. I think that's a bad idea. Scottsdale, we should work with our social service organizations and our faith-based organizations, along with the city, to provide a hand-up to folks that are on the brink of homelessness. That's the best thing that we can do. We can also make sure that city policies provide for enough housing in Scottsdale to try to do our part to keep the housing prices low. Again, it's a difficult situation, it's a regional and statewide issue, but we do not need homeless shelters in Scottsdale parks or within hotels.
Well, it is something that we all care about, and we have to protect those who are experiencing homelessness. Do your air conditioner breaks and you can't afford to fix it, that could lead somebody to leave their home. We're there to come in and fix it. We are coordinating, I agree with Mr. Stratton, we're coordinating with faith-based and other organizations to provide wraparound services. And we did use a hotel, and it was actually very successful, to house people. We need them housed, showered, and to provide the services they need to get out of that hole. I will tell you, I had my own success story with one homeless gentleman who's now housed. We are working with SRP and the federal government to protect our canals from camping as well. We're doing other things as well. Thank you.
As the former Chair of the Human Services Commission, I got to see firsthand what a great job our city, Human Services Department, and more specifically, some of our social workers, like Mike Lopatch and Rosa Pinochet and Jennifer Murphy, all of them working hard to make sure that they provide the services, the limited services unfortunately that we have here, to help the homeless, to help find them a place to live, to help get them even off the streets for a day or two. Unfortunately, we just don't have the funding available, and I think that Scottsdale should look at ways to be able to increase the funding so that we can help those that want to get the help. Now, there are some that aren't going to want to help, some of the homeless that aren't going to want the help. But we need to be able to help those that want the help, because it's not always a mental illness issue, is, as Solange said, it could be an air conditioner, it could be one paycheck away from homelessness. So we must find ways to help them. And a great organization here that does that is Family Promise. They're here in Scottsdale to do a great job of getting people back on the street, off the street.
I am a strong proponent of helping those who cannot help themselves, but I do not think it's the job of the city to provide housing and all these other programs. I think it's the job of the faith-based communities and social services. We already have those in place, and I think we need to work better with Phoenix Rescue Mission and those that are already providing for the homeless in our cities. I think there are many churches that want to help, and they don't know how. So let's get with those faith-based communities and help them help those that cannot help themselves. But I do not think that Scottsdale, I don't think we want to become Phoenix, where we're doing so much that people don't have an incentive. Let's create a work program. Let's create somehow to where they can work towards something. That's my, that's my.
Thank you. It's a very touchy subject, and I think it's something that, it should be, it's something that should be handled delicately and gently. I do think that we have to remember that Scottsdale is a tourism city, we're a tourism-first city, and so when we have increasing homelessness, you know, that's the tourism dollars that come here and pay the bed taxes and sales taxes, they're less likely to come back. I mean, some of these cities that, you know, where homelessness has really gotten out of hand, have seen a real drop in tourism activity and visits. So we have to remember that we're protecting our brand when, as it relates to the issue of homelessness. The other thing is that, you know, from a public safety standpoint, you have an absolute right to feel safe in your city. You have an absolute right to feel safe on your street. So we have to remember that, and I would also, I would oppose the construction of any government-funded facilities in Scottsdale. Thank you.
So let's be clear, homelessness is not unique to Scottsdale, nor was it created by Scottsdale. But of course, we're compassionate, especially in these periods of oppressive heat. I think the city is doing a good job of referring people to already existing resources in the valley and the faith-based organizations to provide housing, mental health help, and substance abuse help. And we need to continue to do that. I am not in favor of spending additional city funds for this problem. The safety of our residents, of our visitors, and our police officers trumps that need. So I certainly do not want, as the mayor asked the city staff to do, to investigate the possibility of a homeless hotel. That is not for Scottsdale, that's not going to solve the problem. And we also have to make sure we are eliminating vacant, blighted, empty lots, because those are magnets for homeless people. Thank you.
Well, actually, the city of Scottsdale is doing a lot to help the homeless that we have here, but you have to realize, we can't force them to accept our help, they have to want it. We are working with the Community Bridges to provide a six-month temporary hotel shelter program, and it's for homelessness, for food and comprehensive case management, and access to housing vouchers. The Phoenix Rescue Mission outreach navigators interact directly with people who are experiencing homelessness, and the city of Scottsdale has worked to lead, to have placements in these shelters, residential programs, and other permanent housing placements. It's important to note that we have placed over 160 people so far who were homeless, and they now have shelter. So I think that's huge. We work with the Phoenix Rescue Mission with their Brick by Brick program, where people are actually paid to build stuff, and it helps. Thanks. There's more.
Okay, we're going to move to the economy. And the question that we have, and we will start with Solange, is, given the rising costs of housing, food, and gas, how can the city help seniors stay in their homes?
Well, I did answer that partially last time. It is far cheaper to keep people housed than it is to allow them to fall into homelessness. So we have a number of repair programs, as I mentioned. People in this city often own their homes, seniors own their homes outright, but they can't afford the utility bills. So that is, so fixing ACs and helping with utility bills is one of the ways we've kept seniors in their housing. There are a number of programs out there, nonprofits, that connect seniors that live at home, possibly they don't drive, with other seniors who might drive but don't have a house. So that's a program that I'm really interested in looking into. How do we keep people who want to stay home, protect them from not dying in their home? We also provide services to drive seniors to medical appointments, and of course, I'm a volunteer at the Granite Reef Senior Center, and we provide a lot of food for low-income seniors all year round. Those are just a touch of what we're doing before the bell. Thank you.
A lot of the seniors are renters, so either by choice or not. And what we have found in the last few years is, as the market, the rent market rises, the landlords are telling the tenants that, hey, I know you're paying $1,000 this month, but when rent goes up, it's going to be $1,500, let's say. Well, on a fixed income, that extra $500 a month, you cannot afford. So what do we do? There are programs within the federal government, there are programs within Scottsdale that will help you with rent assistance, that will help you look for, as I mentioned, those social workers before, that will help you look for a place to live. Now, how do we keep them in there? We find ways to keep the rents affordable. So that might look at a program that we start here. It may look like a government program that will help the seniors, but there's got to be a way that we can help them stay in their house, stay in their apartment, so that they don't have to end up on the streets like so many of the other homeless. Thank you.
Well, being a senior myself, I am, my heart is just with our senior citizens. I love them, and I was on the board of directors, and still am actually, for a program called Help for Kids. It actually was statewide, now it's national. We won four presidential awards for our service in this community, in Phoenix. We passed out hundreds of thousands of food boxes every week, brought the kids to church, bussed them in, so they could have a faith and family time. We took them off the streets and bussed them in. I think we can do the same thing for our seniors through our churches, who, I was on staff with presidential staff, and we worked with the churches. So I am very much in favor. I know a lot of churches, I am an ordained minister, and I want to help our seniors and those that are in need, but it has to be done through the churches.
Mark, do you mind repeating it?
Thank you.
Given the rise of costs in housing, food, and gas, how can the city help seniors stay in their houses?
I think part of the premise of the question is, you know, what can the city of Scottsdale do for this issue, because it's a very concerning issue. And a lot of times, it gets used as sort of a pretext for, you know, that's the reason we need to build and build and build, build forever. And we have to remember that Scottsdale's character is something that's worth protecting. And so I do not think that the answer is going to be to build. We have 10,000 apartments and units that are approved in the pipeline that are going to be coming to your neighborhoods at some point, and there's talk of adding, you know, thousands of more, 50,000 more. When they build those, the prices are not any lower. Has anybody seen the prices for those? Those luxury units? They're not any lower. So the notion that you would get downward pressure, we could add 100,000 more apartments to Scottsdale, and you aren't going to get the kind of price relief that you're looking for. So we also have to remember that there's a downside of that, what it does to our infrastructure, our roads, our congestion, and so forth. Thank you.
So during ordinary times, the typical assistance with utilities and meals is very helpful, and I strongly support and encourage those being continued, especially among faith and charitable groups. We're facing a much different situation than just ordinary economic times. As Raul mentioned, we're talking about rental increases of 30, 40, 50, 60 percent. No Meals on Wheels or utility support is going to help that person. So yes, some of you are not going to like my answer, but we do need some additional housing. And I also want to address something. I have heard the number 50,000 units. Nobody that I've spoken with has approved 50,000 units in this city. I've heard that 10,000 units are currently underway. That is not the case. 3,500 are currently under construction. The total number even in the pipeline doesn't even get to 8,000. So I think facts are important before we just try to turn every issue into density and losing our character issue. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, this is a real problem for a lot of people here in Scottsdale. They raise the rates on these older apartment complexes on older citizens who have been in these places for 20, 30 years, and then they say, well, if you can't afford to pay for this apartment now, now that we've raised it up to $4,000, $5,000 a month, too bad. You're out. And these folks have nowhere to go. There's nothing that is available in the current scenario that they have available. So this is a huge problem. The city can't demand that developers lower their rates for apartments. We don't have that power. But we can help with some of the costs that they have to have. We do have services that help people get to doctors, to help them get to the grocery store. We have services through our senior centers that deliver boxed lunches. I've done it myself. And these are things that we can do, and they help, but the answer is, we have to have some housing that is going to be available for our seniors. Thank you.
Quick question. What are the criteria for rebuttals? Because I made a comment.
It has to be by name.
Okay, because I made a comment, and then there was a rebuttal there. Okay, thanks, Mark.
Go ahead, Tim.
Great, thank you. Yes, this is a critical issue. As all of you know, the economy is really in a tough position now, and we have a pending recession that's coming down the pipeline, and we have ever-increasing interest rates, which are keeping the cost of housing high. It's killing our folks on fixed incomes, and we have to do something about it. And we can talk about social services, those are great, we need to do all we can, but we have to address, not only as Scottsdale, but as a state, our housing crisis. We are not building enough units for all of the residents, and that's driving up prices across the board. I study economics. I've taken a number of economics courses. It's a simple supply and demand issue. One of my opponents, Mr. Graham, doesn't seem to believe in the law of supply and demand. That attitude on council has to stop. We need to encourage quality development, not in our neighborhoods, but quality development where appropriate, to help address this crisis, and it is a crisis.
30 seconds for Mr. Graham.
That qualifies. So 100%, unequivocally, there are 10,000 units approved in the pipeline. That's documented, that's factual, it's been put forward, and you can say it's debunked, it's not debunked, it's factual. The 50,000 number isn't my number. That number has been put out there by what self-described housing experts on many occasions. And the last thing I'll say is that I have a bachelor's degree in economics, and I will say that I will put forward the challenge, which economist says that if we put 100,000 apartments more in Scottsdale, that prices will go down? You can add 100,000 more, you can add 200,000 more, prices will not go down in Scottsdale. Thank you.
That's right. It's lightning round. Okay, Barry Graham, we're going to start with you. When you were a child, what did you want to be when you grew up?
Thank you, I loved animals, and so probably something veterinarian of some sort. Thank you. Oh, and speaking of which, I love horses and our equine culture, so we want to keep a hold of that. So thank you.
I actually wanted to be a lawyer, but I didn't want to have to follow somebody else's rules, so. So a judge would have been better, because you get to decide the rules.
When I was a child, I wanted to be a teacher like my mother. She was a wonderful teacher, and she did a lot of good for the underprivileged children in South Phoenix.
And I too wanted to be a teacher. Spent many days playing with my brother and our friends running school during the summer. So that was something I was interested in.
I wanted to study sharks, but my marine biology teacher talked me out of being a marine biologist, so I got my scuba license and just did some diving and saw a lot of sharks.
I come from a very musical family, so I wanted to be a Broadway musical actor. Obviously didn't pan out, but still.
Actually, I used to produce and direct, me and my little sister, we used to produce and direct all of our own shows. So we, one day, we would be an airline stewardess, the next day, we'd be an actress, the next day, we'd be a movie star. So we got it all.
So we've had a lot of conversation about housing, and this one is also another chance to talk about that. So what can the city do to incentivize attainable housing? We're going to start with Raul.
To incentivize. Well, first of all, as we've, you've heard many on here, and I agree that we need more housing, so that the, we need more housing in the downtown, not the downtown area, in Scottsdale in general. I think we should put it in the areas like around the 101, near the industry areas, near the commercial areas. But we need more housing. And I'm sorry, repeat the question.
What, I got lost. What can the city do to incentivize attainable housing?
I think one of the things we could do is, in new developments where appropriate, set aside a percentage of units for attainable housing. So these would be a little bit lower rent, and would be like the Miller. The Miller has, I think they started with five and then jumped up to eight or something like that. And so it allows for those who otherwise wouldn't be able to afford housing to get in at a better, more affordable price. Thank you.
So you're talking about affordable housing right here in Scottsdale, right? I agree with Barry, that I don't think Scottsdale is ever going to be affordable. And I think that, I think I am against the high-density, high-rise developments, but we can work with developers to develop beautiful, architecturally sensitive developments right here in our city. But are they going to be affordable? I don't know. I don't think so. Not everyone can live in Scottsdale. It is an aspiration to live here, so people aspire to live here because it's a beautiful city with open and wide spaces. I grew up here in Scottsdale, and I love the open space, I love looking at Camelback Mountain, and I think that other people do too, and we don't want to block our views with the high-rise development. So that's what, that's what I would say.
Appreciate the question. If we continue down the path in Scottsdale that we're going, we're going to lose the character of our city. And it's our character of our city that is your quality of life, and it's what grows our economy, and it's what brings people here. We have to remember that we're a tourist-first city, and if we build and build and build down the path we're going, we're going to lose our character, and we're going to lose our tourists. It's not going to go well. We're going to lose our city. We can add, if we want to, we can go ahead and add 100, 200, 200,000 apartments. We can do it if we want to, but you're, I mean, as far as what's going to happen, it doesn't, it's not going to work out. It's not going to go well. I don't believe the government should meddle with housing prices, and I don't believe, I don't think that's their role. I think that Mark just said that. I do think on the workforce end, though, it was, I was on planning commission when the developer came for the Miller and proposed five units, and it was, I was the one who negotiated it up to eight units. So we had a 60% increase, and I was very proud of that, and that was voluntary, and I think that set a very good example for workforce housing. Thank you.
So there is a difference between affordable housing and attainable housing, and no, we're not going to ever be able to supply housing for every range of the economic ladder. But we can do things to make things more attainable. And I do applaud both the commissions and boards and the city council for asking some of the developers to set aside units to be lower-priced and/or specifically reserved for the people that are important to our community that can't afford to live here, such as teachers, such as healthcare workers, such as police and fire. That is an important strategy that I fully support. I do not support the city subsidizing in any way a lower-cost development, but also, I would like to just kind of rein in this extremism that we've gone now from 50 to 100,000 to 200,000. We need to speak about the middle and moderation, and stop scaring people with these absurd numbers. Thank you.
Well, we're never going to be low-cost housing in Scottsdale. That's not going to happen. Here's an interesting story. I didn't know about what you said, Barry, that you had talked to our developer buddy, lawyer for the Miller, because I had done the same thing, and I thought, I was the one that negotiated the eight affordable housing units, and you did the same thing. So I think he got us. I think he got us. But that's one way to get some affordable housing for some of our folks that need it, but it's a very small way. I have talked to our social services director, Greg Bestin, and I've talked to our mayor and several other people about possibilities and what we could do in order to work with the cities that surround us, Tempe and Mesa and Phoenix and us, and find a common area where we could perhaps build to have affordable housing in that area, where it's not within the city limits, but in the county. And I don't know how that has been going, hopefully will. Thank you.
This is an important issue, obviously, and it all comes back to supply and demand, and the law of supply and demand, and we need more housing units across the spectrum. And so it is not sustainable or realistic to think that the city alone can wave a magic wand and require a developer to put up a few units, and that's going to somehow make housing affordable in Scottsdale. I think we're fooling ourselves if we think that. What we can do, though, is we can create some voucher systems for, again, our essential workers, police, fire, teachers in Scottsdale who want to live here. We could work as a city to set up a program where we could help, maybe working with our development community, to increase some housing units for those folks. But we really need to stop this extremism. 200,000 units? Nobody's talking about 200,000 units. That's unrealistic, that's not going to happen, and we need to stop scaring the voters.
So in 1996, when I moved here, Scottsdale was affordable. Nurses and teachers and police officers did live in the neighborhoods. So what's changed? There have been three factors. One is we have a huge increase in snowbirds, and that's good for our economy, so, but that did take away some housing, but that was okay. Four to 5,000 houses turned into hotels because of the short-term rental law. That has hurt. Those houses are no longer available to the policemen, the people that we want. We unfortunately cannot provide vouchers, that's illegal, to workforce housing. The other thing is that in the 2010s, the city council did approve what I believe is a record number of apartment units. So for better or worse, what they didn't do was require that those units get built. So anybody who thinks we need more housing, you know, and I do agree, the best way to get it done is to get those built. What I have done is on projects that I approved, even though they're lower height and they fit in Scottsdale lower density, they do have stipulations to get built and get built fast. So we need to get off, get the houses in the pipeline built today. That will help. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, candidates. We're now going to go into the closing statements by our distinguished candidates, and we're going to start with Pamela. And you each have one minute to make a case.
I was talking with one of our voters, her name is Susanna. She came here from Romania and escaped, actually, escaped communism with her young son. She now owns a home by hard work in Scottsdale, 20 years later. She's a Realtor now. I was a homeowner by the time I was 21 and 23. I owned my second home, as well as earned that right by working. I think we need to encourage our, this generation is an entitlement generation. I think we need to encourage saving, investing for our future generations. So one of the things, one of the scriptures I love is in 2 Timothy, "God has not given us a spirit of fear, but of power, love, and a sound mind." So I do not believe in operating out of fear, but I believe in operating out of faith, and God is with us. He's going to help us.
Thank you. Thank you. Tonight's been a lot of fun. I want to thank the moderators, I want to thank the sponsors and the fellow panelists. Mostly, I want to thank all of you for being here, because this is about your opinions, this is about your city, this is about your tax dollars. I am the only non-incumbent candidate who has voted on the most critical issues our city has faced over the last 10 years. And I agree with the thousands of residents that I've met along the campaign trail, that protecting our city's character is paramount to preserving your quality of life, expanding our economy, and attracting visitors. So I ask for your vote to continue my commitment to encourage and respect more citizen input on the issues and in this process. You can learn more about my campaign at Barry Graham, Residents First, and I thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
I first visited Scottsdale almost 20 years ago, and I kept coming back, because I knew this is where I wanted to be. It was an easy decision to make, because Scottsdale is a great city. It offers so much to so many, not to mention, we've got low taxes. So over the years, I've come to learn that Scottsdale didn't just happen, it was created. It was created by the men and women in our history that were forward-thinking and visionary. It was that spirit of Scottsdale that made the city great. And now we're fighting to make sure that spirit stays alive and that we continue to move forward. I am going to use my experience of leadership and business and consulting to make sure our city continues to move forward. I will help manage our long-term financials. I will identify new opportunities for growth, and I will meet with and collaborate with interested parties. And of course, I will make decisions based on facts and data and input from residents. Together, we will maintain our strength, we will achieve sustainability, and we will be a better city tomorrow than we are today. I am humbly asked for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Kathy Littlefield, and I am running for a third and final term for our Scottsdale City Council. I'm a Scottsdale native. I grew up here, I went to school here, and I hope to continue to work for you on council to keep our city special. My focus is to protect Scottsdale's special character and high quality of life from the special interests who seek to exploit it at your expense for their personal gain. If we lose our special character, we cannot get it back. I'm not afraid to say no when necessary, when people come before me and ask for high-rise, dense apartment complexes. And I am not afraid to say yes when the project is beneficial to both the citizens and the city. People who know me know I will stay true to my word. That's why both police and fire have endorsed me, as well as COGS, the Coalition of Greater Scottsdale. I'm asking for your continued support for these endeavors, so that I can continue to fight to hold the line on development and to keep our city special. Thank you.
I'm Tim Stratton, and I'm running for Scottsdale City Council, and I'm asking for your vote. This is an important election. It's going to determine the direction that Scottsdale goes. Scottsdale is a great city that we have all come to love and enjoy, and I am running for council because of all of the candidates on the dais. I have the most direct municipal finance experience and work experience to leverage for Scottsdale's families. I work with cities and towns across the country on finance issues. I've seen cities that have taken leadership and grown and become something greater. I've seen cities that have stagnated and died. I want to make sure that as a city, we're doing everything we can to keep our special formula intact. That is, keeping our property taxes low, our housing values high, and keeping our high level of municipal services. That's what people love about Scottsdale. They love our amenities, they love coming here to visit, and we need to make sure that we do everything we can to protect that economic engine and make Scottsdale a better place to live. Thank you.
So I'm Solange Whitehead, seeking my second term. I ran for office in 2018 because I care about Scottsdale. When we moved here in 1996, it was for just six months, but we fell in love with Scottsdale, and we stayed, and we raised our three children here. Scottsdale's greatest achievements began as resident ideas and were turned into reality by a city council that listened. So in 2018, when the city seemed to be going in a direction that did not match with community priorities, and...
priorities, and the preserve was threatened, I started going door-to-door. This is my city, and this is my favorite city. I'm still going door-to-door. And when I got elected, I opened City Hall to the community. And together, we've had so many achievements. When a city is aligned with its constituents, it's cheaper to run, the city is safer, and the constituents are happier and healthier. We have many challenges ahead of us with water and with senior affordability, and it's imperative that we have long-term thinking to make sure that Scottsdale continues to prosper for today and tomorrow. Thank you.
You heard me say earlier that I am a lifelong Scottsdale resident. In fact, I still live in the same neighborhood that I was raised in. When my parents got married in 1959, born and raised in Phoenix, when they started, got married and started, wanted to start a family, they'd looked for a town where they knew it would be a good place to raise their family and had great schools. They chose Scottsdale. And because of that, I fell in love with this city, and I continue to love this city. And I think this city has done great things in the past because of people like you and the council coming together to do some great things. Green Belt is a good example. The Preserve is a good example. Unfortunately, we're now starting to see a shift in the change in the attitude of both the citizens and council. So we need to get that divisiveness gone, we need to find a way to work together again. I think my 25-year banking career and my consulting career at Fortune 500 companies gives me the ability to make those tough decisions and collaborate with an open mind. I hope that you'll vote for me. zubiaforscottsdale.com. Thank you.
Okay, I get to say thank you to a lot of good people here. First of all, we obviously wouldn't all be here had it not been for the cooperation and the graciousness of our candidates. So let's give them a round of applause.